Meeting of the Monday's Township Board Trustees. Monday, November 21 at 6:30 PM. Please join me in the Plunge Leagues. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, authoritative, just as a court. Prove all meeting adjutant.
Make a motion to approve the meeting adjutant.
Second.
May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Kendall.
Aye.
Connell, I'm sorry. Oh my, is that a creature?
Yes.
Dear me.
Approval amendments.
I make the motion that we approve the amendments from the board of the board.
Second. May the Deputy Court please call, sorry, may the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Gurley.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Kendall.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Public announcements. Public comment. Consent agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to the established Township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests, act, or prior to the meeting. In which event, the Chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under Agenda Number 811. Approval consent agenda shall be by majority or all vote of those present and voting.
My second.
I have motioned by Court Kendall, supported by Treasurer Donald. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Kendall.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Unfinished business resounding request 19-06-13-151-2 Mr. Fred Pye. I have motioned by Court Kendall, supported by Treasurer Donald. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Kendall.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Gurley. Um, Clifford.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your patience and consideration for this issue.
New business, fire department vehicle emergency lighting and side equipment. Mr. White.
Mr. Supervisor, I am the members of the board. I'll be brief and try and consult because I know a little bit of feedback here. Basically, an SUV that we ordered 11/6/2020 finally arrived, so we're pleased by that. Dragged almost a year to date from the day we presented or placed the order. Most of that was due to COVID-related supply chain issues. Those vehicles come without the emergency lights and the emergency lighting and side road equipment, and so those now have to be added to the vehicle. We obtained two bids from outfitters that.
You want me to boot?
Unboot. Look, there's the microphone on the top. Bomb out your corner.
Why do you ignore me again, really?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Sean.
Sorry. Can the court hear me now? Okay. Uh, so basically I have two bids for you. There are not a lot of companies left that do this kind of work in the Michigan area, so absent sending the vehicle out of state. The two bids that we have, one is for priority, one for emergency services. That bid was the low bid in the amount of $10,985.63 for purchase equipment and installation. The other bid, that company is located in Canton, Michigan. The other bid came with Apollo Fire Apparatus. They're actually located in Romeo, but their bid was $15,006.75. The priority run just did a similar SUV vehicle for the village of our neighbors, the village of New Haven, that's where we got the information from regarding this firm. I looked at their vehicle, they did a very nice job with insulation and equipment, not very comfortable. Recommended that we move forward with the purchase of the emergency light and side road equipment for the new fire department SUV in the amount of $10,985.63, the priority run in emergency of Canton, Michigan. Jim, this is all budgeted, right? It was, yes, uh, we knew it was coming and we thought they actually were budgeted kind of last year and then again this year, because we thought this would all be here a year ago and they had a promise to stay at some point.
Yeah, it's. It's the two microphones, those two.
I turned my.
No, it's the Township one and the one. Because it's picking up both.
Yeah, it's picking up Kathy, Carol.
If I move up here, is it matter how?
No, it's picking up the, it's picking up Carol and Kathy.
I can you. But you want to watch me again?
No, because they are. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Clifford, answer your question, and I'll try to speak loudly without additional mic play in the background. Uh, yes, we budgeted actually again this year. We'd actually budgeted on all this last year in a full budget year ago, because we really didn't envision this taking this long and because of issues outside of all of our control with regards to COVID and supply chain issues that are pretty widely recorded. You know, yes, to short answer your question, we've budgeted for fire departments. No problem. Okay, thank you. Yep.
My second. I have motioned by Court Kendall, supported by Trustee Clifford. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Kendall.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Item D, Public Safety Director Employment Agreement.
Again, I'm going to try to speak away from this one microphone, so if someone can't hear or can't pick me up, that's fine. This is a continuation of my agreement, continuing acting as your Public Safety Director here and secure my services in that role for a total of four years. Now, we'll put me at age 65. I'm not announcing anything tonight, I'm just suggesting what my age will be at that point. The request in pay is for $15,480 for each of those years and without any increase or cost related or otherwise. When I became this board, on one of the one occasion, I enjoyed serving this board in this community in this capacity, and it's never been about any kind of increase in salary for that position. So I would ask the board to consider renewing that agreement. The agreement was drafted by Mr. Sean Kelly from, you know, our legal firm here in the township. It pretty much mirrors the existing agreement that I've worked under with regards to conditions of employment and job search. There's really no other thing, no other stuff. That's all I have. Unless there are any questions.
I'd like to make a motion to renew Mr. White's contract for $15,480 per year for the next four years.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Treasurer Donald, supported by me. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Connell.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Kendall.
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's all I have for the agenda this evening.
Monday's Township Library's snow rule request, Mr. Trumbull.
I'm sorry, I have a really. Library services on right now. I'm sorry about that. Last again, this is a question of Township Library to offer summer rule of services for remainder of the year and others. It is a request to write. My recommendation is to complete one as a support library at a cost of $615,000. First, that one's a lot as we get on the pass.
I make the motion to be approved of the next Township Library's snow rule request that debates for the Department of W.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Trustee Gurley. May the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Clifford.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Kendall.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Item D, Amendment to Section 2202 of the Monday's Township Ordinance to National three, Mr. Kelly. Is there Sean?
Yeah. So, um, this is an amendment to update Section 2202. There's actually, there's two items here. One is that the nice sounding right vision was operating the way they were established. And looking to the new movement statute, so this order is meant to watch that. And also this track, uh, well, section of the amendment shows the right vision.
Sean, I don't know if you looked at the bottom of the amendment section of the old ordinance, section 2204. I don't believe, unless I'm reading this wrong, that we can vote on this tonight because it says, "All proposed amendments to provisions of this ordinance or the official zoning map shall be referred to the planning permission for public hearing and recommendation to the Township Board prior to consideration thereof by the Township Board." I don't know if we're allowed to change that without taking it to a public hearing first.
Not in ordinance.
Do you have the old ordinance in front of you? Do you hear me, Sean?
Barely, yeah, most.
I don't, I'm just trying to get a clarification whether we're able to vote on this at this time, because it says the master of public hearing.
I believe we can vote to send it to the planning commission. If that's what the.
Oh, yeah, I think we ought to table it to be clarification. I don't even know if we can vote that. It's supposed to go to planning first. If I give it so.
Well, there's a couple things on there. One, that section, uh, says, uh, paid one time in 2006, which would be, it's like, yeah, I, um, I'm not certain why, but it itself is inside the ordinance somewhere along the way.
What did you? I'm just reading from section 2204 of amendments on what was said to me in my packet.
That's not reading, so if you read, uh, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, section 3204, it talks about provisions of this ordinance, right? Like you said, Scott, uh, they mentioned, uh, eight, one, ten, thousand, six. So that would be, um, the street zoning, yeah, but.
Yeah.
The kind of way, the way it's done, uh, is that the planning here, uh, the section 2006 acts are free, uh, in the government, eager to take on that. So given that, uh, I would say that amendments to this will be, now, for the, uh, permission to be with that, be subject, and that's not just a planning issue, like being assigned for.
Well, the way that's worded, the way that's worded, Sean, it says, "All proposed amendments to the provisions of this ordinance or the official zoning map shall be referred to the planning permission for public hearing and recommendation to the Township Board prior to consideration thereof by the Township Board." So if that's, if this is all part of the same ordinance, well, then that zoning map, well, then it's got to be any change, any amendments to it, which is what we're doing, would have to be, I'm not sure they meant to be worded this way, don't get me wrong, but I just want to make sure the people are voting.
They just want, like, they just do what they can, um, through this section, completely from zoning and guarantee, at least what I just called, right, the ordinance, right? Be technically, uh, so the ordinance. Uh, I guess what he's saying, I don't remember what he's saying, because it's like, my attention is wide, so don't believe that require any public hearing or anything else or planning permission to be inside and give that the safe neighborhood section and only the permanent section of the house, so that's.
It just agrees with me by all proposed amendments.
But I can realize that, look, the extent that those amendments are clarified law, they can't, we cannot, perhaps, permits like this one, say, that might have to be submitted to all care, the safe neighborhood, not this, like, not the, uh, set, rather, eight, thirty, not eight, and just say to apply to our ordinance, and then decide this whole planning section way to the fourth bullet, and then, so we can, we can, we can, and before that, they can't, they can't, but, uh, maybe break one, trust me, that, I should back to the driver, move this section of the management commission, believe, that's, and have it, it's, it's not, which, the lady's actually not, and we'll start again.
Well, at this time, I think, uh, I think we need to find out. I'd like to make a motion to table it until we get a clarification.
Fair enough, and I think that, to be honest with you, I still don't have, uh, that this is sort of a catchphrase here, maybe I have only been through a section, make this up to, from the zoning, right? You know, and they, the art of the standard, look after us, and, like, not, uh, to, to make that, and, 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 and,
Well, I saw my motions on the floor, and I mean, I said we need a clarification or something to be worded here, whatever we need to do.
The motion is on the floor. Is there a second? I have a motion by Trustee Clifford, supported by Court Kendall, may the Deputy Court please call the roll.
Clifford.
Aye.
Kendall.
Aye.
Connell.
Aye.
Gurley.
Aye.
Reader.
Aye.
Beaumont under opinion from Township Legal Firm. Mr. Kelly.
Okay, so, um, there are those who have seen, uh, vacation, uh, please see the program, and, um, about her, they'll get to see, and, uh, they want to be sent, uh, to the top of each, uh, so, real quick, um, there is a state action effective, based on the person that is, um, only in the, uh, seventy-six, and it says, well, it's a valid public purpose to provide services to the person, and so, that right there is a, uh, purpose, certain public purpose, uh, and, uh, the Michigan Canadian Act, as it's called, in the state act, that allows these dollars to be accepted, uh, from the nation at this point, and so , like, the, like, one states that this knowledge is seen, and it gives, uh, real personal, uh, and personal property, made, uh, made there as a public purpose. So, uh, base is there, cause, let's see, go around, serves a public purpose, and, uh, probably, uh, less, uh, than, uh, the, 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 I guess the only caveat is, you need to make sure that this, proper release, man, when I say proper, you need to carefully, um, to make sure that he spelled this out, that he, the base, included this, the donation, um, for, back, or, maybe, uh, success, this is, uh, the, 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 that, 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 that,
Well, I guess my question would be, the letter that I seen, uh, maybe somebody can change my mind, that I received from Beaumont did not monetarily state the money, they offered their support. I never did see a letter that had a monetary donation or any hint of that, that.
Oh, and, and so that's why this is sort of, uh, you, 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 if at all, if at all.
If at all, Sean, I didn't, there was no, it was support that I believe supervisor or administration clarified, was that supervisor, like, asked, you'd be never, uh, in time, uh, you know?
No, there was no monetary, no, no, but like Sean said, this is a house, to make sure in the future, because it's not just Beaumont, there could be others.
I just want to be presumptuous here, assuming they're going to do that, because there was no money mentioned in that letter, they did their support, but I, a while back, we asked for, we wanted the committee to give a recommendation to this board on how to proceed, and no decision had been made, we haven't met in a while, due to COVID and other reasons, but this committee never recommended the board on how to proceed. There's, you know, it's like, I kind of related to the fact that I walked architects to one of my buildings the other day for school, to recommend how to proceed, whether to remodel a building or to build a new one, and it was the same principle. And, uh, we had no decision from our committee, we had no decision on what, how cost effective it would be to remodel as opposed to building a new one that was drawn up in the committee's plan with the new product. And again, we don't know how many seniors we actually have. Jackie's, uh, thing there, what did we register as far as seniors, you know?
We, I believe there was around fifteen seniors at a technical.
I understand.
Fifteen at a technical.
Between both sections?
Correct.
So we don't know if those are all from Lennox or, or by yours.
No.
Well, to me, until we hear a decision from the committee on how to proceed, or maybe talk to an architect, on what would be more cost effective, I, I would, I would table, let the committee make their decision, bring it ahead.
Mr. Clifford, this is not regarding the committee, this is just Beaumont's letter of support to the seniors.
I understand that, that you're insinuating, Mr. Reader, that it's monetary, because it might happen. So if we're going to set up something for donations, we might give over presumptuous here and saying, hey, they're going to donate 500 bucks, but they might not be donating anything at all. And so before we do that, we need to see, I think we need to see how to go about whether we're going to remodel the old building, make a decision, or, or, uh, build a new one. And I, you know, I don't, I'm still up in the air, my fears about that, but I, I think we're getting a little of that, we need to let the committee finish their work, uh, and find out, maybe find out if Beaumont has plans and the monetary, because that, that really makes like a hard decision, because it's, we're not, I don't want to make assumptions and say, well, can that stay as far as we're, you know, I, I really, um, it's a lot to assume, and I've never seen a hospital organization, uh, help donate money for a senior site, but I don't, I don't know that, I just know, uh, we get this to be very good this year, I mean, I, I don't do something for seniors, but I'm not sure if I'm going to build a new one or use one, and I'd like to see some, some cost effective, uh, like, uh, let a friend tell me later, if it's more, if it takes us to remodel or where to change to go. I, I really, I can go along with seniors, I love them, but I, I just don't have, uh, an idea of what's the best way to go, I'm still up in the air, I'm sorry, you know, I'm trying to slow this down, I just, you know, we're responsible for everybody's money here, so I, if we're having donations, then it's good to have us.
Wouldn't the board have any one of the, you know, whether we have these things, whether we put the letters on, and a god's resolution for the second donation, the board would still have final say on any donation that come in if they are sent to me and have to use for a specific purpose. For instance, if Beaumont didn't want it, it had to be personally.
For instance, if Beaumont didn't want it, it had to be burned to the ground, I still need the board's decision to accept that donation under those terms.
Of what they might do to Old Bell or Governor. Well, I just, I didn't, I go with what you said, and I would think that you were gonna put out that we're receiving donations, or if that, we would have a little bit more of a fit of his plan on what we wanna do.
But don't we just wanna accept donations, that doesn't have to be just for the senior center?
Well, it might make, it might make, it might make a change in what they wanna donate, if they know whether we're gonna remodel or build them. We have no, we haven't decided anything on what the plan is.
But what if they just wanna donate five hundred dollars for the senior center? Not necessarily for...
That's, that's what it is, that's fine, but I just don't want, you know. That's your point, I mean, about this looking at everything involved and what we've done so far. And the committee hasn't finished, we don't have any plan on there as far as whether we're gonna remodel. And so I just kinda said, I don't want to give hesitation and make people think that Beaumont's gonna donate, and they're really not. They're just getting their, their goal of the, kind of, and if they go for it.
Luann, can you hear me? Luann, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So what you're saying is, even if they gave us, like, let's just say they donated, wanted to donate bucks, we would have to approve that as a reward to pay that donation of bucks, right? Bicycles, right? So no matter what they wanna donate to us, we have to approve anyways? Okay, no matter what they want to donate to us?
Just hold the spacebar now.
Okay, so no matter what they want to donate to us, bikes? Chalkboards, anything, it has to come to the board, correct? And be approved through us, whether it's money or whatever, correct? Well, to an extent, I understand.
I don't know, I, this, well, I don't know, can you leave a comment on this or what? But I, I just don't want to be presumptuous with Beaumont, and I don't, I don't think we're to the point now where we have a clear direction on what we're doing. I don't have a problem with approving the letter either. But I don't, I don't wanna set it on a date, assuming that Beaumont's gonna donate money, because I can't.
But I would like to make the motion to approve the letter of support and authorize the attorneys to adopt, sorry, to draft a resolution for the accepting of any donations coming forth.
Second.
I have a motion by myself and treasure, seconded by treasurer, may the deputy court please follow the ball.
Reader?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item F for Party Community Foundation Legal Review and Recommendation, Mr. Kellum.
We're going to, and that's what that's what, that's this entity, that would be something that, that, that's crucial. And I will say that there's a safe action, yeah, that Howard's adopted, and that's why it's, it's a yellow one.
I would like to make the motion to table item F for further legal review. I have a motion by myself, supported by treasurer, may the deputy court please follow the ball.
Reader?
Aye.
Tom? Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
New Haven community dinner asset separation proposal, Madam Court.
In her reading, when it was, this is why I wanted to say that, as opposed to a community dinner inside a building, they were possibly considering doing a modern, summertime, so that they could, you know, help the doors. That was one of the possible things that they were looking to include this, uh, community fund money. Let me also say that I checked with our auditors, and we actually, as a board, decided to take that two thousand seventy-five dollars that came off to us, which we have the funds, they were asking for the children for their account, and in this order, community activities, because that's how we collect it, was under, you know, all community activities.
Is there anything in writing, Luann, that says that we, that they have to notify us before they pull any money out of that account? Luann, is there anything in writing that says that they have to notify us of pulling any money out of that account?
I don't know, we put, um, tax, and it has to, you know, I don't see any amount that's gonna be as important to the account, or more than we see that now, and it does, so there shouldn't be any run with the present in the early quarter.
Right, because from my understanding, that money is only to be used for community events. Diners, say a very few, something like that.
That is correct.
Okay. So I think we should have something in writing that's, that they can't use any of that without, you know, fuskings and hurt, and maybe get something where, that you set a quarterly report to show that that money's still there, and if they're gonna spend any of it, to let us know.
I have no problem relating to the issue, now, I think it's probably something we should, we should probably get. We have a bunch of fun and enjoying the town, you know, getting the talent, or, I should, something we should, you know, so I have a problem relating to the issue.
My other issue is all the equipment that I am personally storing right now. Do we have somewhere to put that? Because it's actually a new piece of stuff.
This is, I want to say the issue, but we have, so again, the building's office, someone really has started. The rest of the board wants, we, the board wants, the board's wish to be, when it's township, you have the, I'm just sort of placing this on, but it's certainly a board decision.
The only thing that I have a concern about is, there's a lot of stuff in those toads that can be used, and we wouldn't have any clue whether they're being used, and it's all brought with money that is community from hand in hand.
Could an inventory sheet be possibly made?
Well, yeah, I obviously have to do an inventory sheet, because there's a lot of pressure on that. So if they decide to land it out to somebody, how would we know that the stuff is stolen? That sounds great to me. So I will make a motion, strike a motion that we need, need to come up with some kind of agreement with them about, that they can't do, they think that we need access to see those quarterly reports along with, they're not allowed to, they're not allowed to touch any of that without any authorization from us, any of the plans are not allowed to be spent without notice of force. A paper for notification?
I second your motion.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by trustee Clifford, may the deputy court please follow the ball.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Item H, updated chart of accounts, Madam Court.
I second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, supported by trustee Clifford, may the deputy court please follow the ball.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Item I, window cleaning quotes, we are requesting that this item be tabled, as some quotes came in after the deadline for the board meeting.
I have a motion.
I'll make that a motion.
All right.
I have a motion by myself to table a convex being due to subquotes being proven after the deadline. I have a motion by myself, seconded by trustee Clifford, may the deputy court please follow the ball.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Call the board.
Call the board. I would like to ask Mr. White if you have gotten any more quotes on the security cameras, or how that's going?
Good evening, Ma'am. I've been working with trustee Clifford on that project, we spoke about that just before the meeting this evening. I did meet with the representatives of Johnson Patrol, who has our current security camera equipment here in the Thompsonville, the park, and senior center. Mr. Clifford and I met with them once together, I met with them once independent of that, just for some additional work. They have provided at this point in time, informations, detailed drawings, and a quote in a dollar amount. Mr. Clifford was continuing to meet with a couple of representatives he is familiar with. I think he was rural at New Haven Schools, where he is responsible for some of those things. He has some unique background in this area, and he and I agreed we will meet next week. We'll settle on a date here this week, but we'll meet around Tuesday of next week, Wednesday of next week, to go over and all of it together, and possibly even have a package for the board of information at least for the meeting, if anything.
Yeah, we'll have that each one, just to chat.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would just like to make a quick announcement, that with the holidays quickly approaching, we are proud to announce that next tangent will be toy drop-off site for Toys for Tots. For those who are, who are familiar with Toys for Tots, the basic mission of the Marine Toys for Tots program is to collect new unwrapped toys, distribute those toys to less fortunate children at Christmas, and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. The box for the Toys for Tots drop-off will be in our main lobby during our normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty to five. We hope to give every child a Merry Christmas this year, thank you. Item thirteen, closed session. Item fourteen, adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty-six.
Is there a reason we, for example, did, is there a reason you didn't have closed session, is it?
I think it was a tight one.
Oh.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee, sorry, by treasurer, supported by trustee Gurley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.